...indivisible, liberty, justice for all. All right, I was gonna start right off with Jason and Tom since they've come down tonight and get ready to this explanation first thing and let them go as soon as we can. So any questions we do have for them, which I know you did?
I do.
Fire away.
Okay, well, Tom, at the meeting at the DPW, was it last month or whenever? My concern obviously is to a discussion about what you feel will be the impact of this project, should it go through, the 40% reimbursement, maybe 70% reimbursement. What's gonna be the worst-case scenario impact on users as far as a rate increase? I mean, I know it's a guess, but...
It doesn't matter. We already have in the works the rate increases necessary to cover all the way down to a 30% reimbursement.
Okay.
So the rate increases that have already been voted on is we want to have one penny per cubic foot this year's building cycles and then...
I know I'm gonna sound ignorant here.
A penny a year. So then FY '23 will go up one more penny.
Okay, I know I'm gonna sound ignorant here, but it's because I am about this.
Yes.
Tell me what the average user, how many square cubic feet? I mean, how will it impact my...
The minimum charge is 1,000 cubic feet.
Okay.
Probably 50% of people stay 1,000 cubic feet or less.
Okay.
Obviously, if more people live in the home, they use more money.
So it's about a $10 increase in 1,000 cubic feet?
Yeah, so basically it'll go up like $15 per cycle for the average.
What's a cycle?
For this year, each year average user will go $15 per quarter and then the next...
Per quarter, okay, so it's $60 a year, you think?
Right.
Okay. And how, the changes that obviously are going to be made primarily improve the current works of the system because it's 30 years old and worn and new things have happened in 30 years.
Yep, the list that we placed in there, the first phase, the secondary clarifier mechanism rehabilitation, we've had one of those fail. We've scrambled and got pieces, they're working again, so we can have both legs of the system online. Again, like you said, those are 30-plus years old and they sit there and spend all day, every day since they started.
Secondary clarifiers have a life of 26 years.
Okay.
We're now over 30. So we've managed to maintain it and keep them going for four, five, six years now without doing crap now. The oxidation is rehabilitation. The concrete is starting to fall, it's starting to fall apart. It needs new linings. That's important to keep, basically everything contained.
So basically on those ditches, there's a liner that protects the concrete, keeps the wastewater from coming in contact directly with the concrete, because the wastewater will erode it, the chemicals in it, you know, attack the chemical bond of concrete. So the liner has failed in a lot of places and it's been that way for many, many years since it's been talked about getting done.
So if you, if everything is successful, the vote comes on at the SS special town meeting and you begin your engineering work, when would you expect the community to see groundbreaking and when would you expect to see the bond actually actives that we're beginning to pay off?
I believe the law would kick in FY '25.
Okay.
Is that what the... yeah, I believe that's on, if you have the same sheet of ideas or not.
Okay.
Yeah, 2025, kicking the first year of loan.
You expect that we'll go for 30 years on the repayment?
I think the engineers have had it set out for 40 years.
Oh, okay then. And they probably guesstimated some interest, or is there an interest level that USDA, you know, manages for us or...
So on the second-to-last page of that, what package do you have?
Yeah.
It shows kind of the breakdown of the engineers at the fore. Very top one is USDA with no grant.
Right.
With no grant, 40-year duration of 1.75%, the annual debt service with both Phase 1 and 2 combined would be $226,000 a year. We're already anticipating grants, we just don't know the amount and we can't move to find that amount until we have the town vote. So we've been told 40%, it's highly likely we could do more than that, but we're trying to be conservative and we've gone with 30%. And the annual debt service on that is $158,495 per year with a 1.75%.
So nobody is guesstimating the interest rate that we would, you know, have the loan at?
Well, sorry, 1.75%.
Okay, and is that a USDA-certified loan? I mean, because that seems very low.
That particular one is, that's a USDA.
Yeah, because that's very, I mean, we couldn't get that as a town.
Right.
I mean, so, okay, so USDA...
And then yellow one's an SRF loan, the next two further down.
Okay.
And the annual debt service on the two, or on the SRF loans, which is the 20-year and a 30-year, obviously because they've got a shorter time span...
Right.
And the interest rate is higher, we'd end up with a higher debt service every year.
Right.
The other thing we're also doing as well, we have asked Senator Gold for an earmark on one of the bills going through. They find out that it got passed by, we were not included on the earmark. So as these things come out, the engineers let us know, they get it all ready and then we...
Why do you think we were not considered on the earmark? Did you forget? Was it just not a timely request from us or...
It's, I believe it's, has to do still with all the infrastructure stuff that's coming through.
Okay.
I don't know the reason why it wasn't approved.
So that means we may be waiting longer to break ground?
No, it just means if we can get it on the earmarks, and it might take some pushing, we may not, you know, contact you folks to put some lead on the center. That money would then be, you know, like grandma.
On top of, maybe on top of our grandfather.
Right, right, right.
So again, it would just knock down our debt service costs.
Okay. So if, obviously, if the vote goes the way you would hope and so forth, and we start seeing payments in FY '25, would it break ground in a year from now?
I'd say it would probably be a year.
By the time you get engineering...
By the time engineering's done, everything goes up to bid, all that stuff, by the time it program, I'd say it'd be in a year.
Most of these things are on site, they're not in the roads?
Nope, they're all on site.
Yeah, okay. I know you've got a lot of roadwork coming up on Route 32, I hate to see a lot of roadwork there, okay. Okay, my questions are good, I'm just very concerned that, you know, we make sure that the public understands that it doesn't start tomorrow.
Right.
That the increase will come online when, you know, in FY '25.
Right, obviously...
The increases have already started this year and next year, they're already scheduled. They're already scheduled.
The increases are already scheduled, they happen regardless of this project goes in or doesn't go in. The biggest thing, you know, this is going to be covered by the sewer enterprise fund. This isn't going for towns, taxes, not attacking any of that, it's just what they're getting charged for their water sewer rates as of, it's in place anyways.
Well, we just gotta make sure it comes in with at least 30% of a grant, because if it doesn't, the enterprise fund wouldn't be able to handle it, or we'd have to increase the enterprise loan rate?
Well, the rate would have to be increased at that point. They say 30% is pretty much the lowest that they've seen be awarded, that's why we plan for that, because that's kind of the lower number.
In case, yeah.
They seem pretty positive, about 40 or more.
And when would you know the percent reimbursement rate?
After we get the vote that we have the authorization to do these projects, then we can apply for everything.
Okay.
And then after the applications are in, it goes to the USDA and all that stuff and then we'll see what they...
So maybe six months from now, we would know that?
I don't think it would even be that long, no.
Good.
So USDA right now, the application has been submitted with them. The town vote is a requirement by them before we can move forward.
I understand.
So as soon as we get the vote, they say yes, USDA will then finish it up, put it through, and then once their federal budget gets approved, they'll know exactly how much money they have and then they can start allocating.
Okay.
And if this should be delayed and doesn't come through till town meeting, the risk would be that the federal money would come through and they'd start passing grants out and then we'd get what's left, if anything, later on down the road.
Kind of ways to explain to us that earlier we're in the pot, the better off we are.
Right.
Well, we should be in by the Ides of March.
We're hopeful.
For those of you who care about Shakespeare. Okay, so I'm happy, I'm just very concerned about the, you know, the rates for community members who, you know, are on the sewer line, not them being overly burdened.
Right.
From what people tell me, and I don't know how accurate it is, that we have one of the higher rates for sewer bills, say, in central Mass, so...
We have higher rates in some of the larger communities because they have more people to pay for.
Yeah, right.
Other small communities, the rates are failing for hours.
We don't, we don't have any expectation of increasing the lines? Sewer, how many people are on the lines?
There's been talks of that.
Yeah.
We've done some engineering for, like, the road products that we have coming up, Windville Road, because of the depth of ledge and all that stuff, they're talking about it not being feasible to extend that with the amount of users up there. So there are talks of extending the line.
I just want, you, you have the capacity though, affluent wise, to handle more people on board.
Ideally, what we need is more commercial, more industry at town, which then alleviates some of the pressure off the residential part.
Right.
But we haven't had much growth in decades.
Well, we've had a bigger housing year than usual this past year, but I don't know how much of it was on the line, so...
I love it.
Yeah, I love it, yeah. Okay, well, I'm very happy and thank you so very much for coming and having a chat with us and we look forward to the special town meeting as much as one can look forward to a special town meeting.
What is the one cent increase per cubic foot? Is on both water and sewer or just on sewer?
That's just sewer.
Just sewer, and what is the rate per cubic foot presently total?
Residential is 11 cents.
So it's gone up 10% is the rate increase?
One penny, right.
Right, 10% increase. Just trying to put it into perspective for people, so if someone says, "I'm paying 600 a year," I'll pay 660.
So since FY '17, it's been 10 cents per cubic foot.
Right.
So what they usually recommend is go up every year, sometimes that doesn't happen for no reason, people don't wanna, we don't wanna increase their rates unless we have to cover our services. So FY '22 would go to 11 cents.
And the billing units are typically per 100 cubic feet, so it shows up in the bills, so it's, so it really shows up as a dollar, or now it'll be a $1.10 per 100 cubic feet. Just so people can, when they see the bill and see the different numbers, they might not get it, but if they pay attention, the bill says per 100 cubic feet is typical.
When the entry rate on the bill will be explained?
Doesn't mean they'll get it.
That's true.
So, little extra minute to explain, it's about a 10% increase, it has been increased for how many years total?
Since 2007.
So it's been, it's been five years since there's been an increase in the rates and there will be one this year and one next year, uh, two year, next year, right?
Next year.
2023, but that's...
I suspect your energy bills will go up. I know, I know.
Some of the things we've seen lately is, you know, obviously with the energy bills going up, EPA is starting to crack down, we're starting to do more reports, we're starting to do more studies. The big thing we've started seeing now is PFAS, anybody's heard of the PFAS? Now we're having to test for that. So there's a lot of this stuff that's getting put onto us that we have no control.
Right.
Water, they put PFAS on water last year, we started doing water on the fence, testing on that, now it's transpired into place work as well.
Well, I don't think that's gonna end anytime soon.
I don't think so.
Probably not. All set then?
I am all set, thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you guys.
Excellent. Look at that, outta here in 15 minutes.
We appreciate that.
Have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Oh, and Jason, thanks for the light.
No problem. See you guys.
The plate is bit fixed on the edge, okay.
Okay, so use of town property, Listening Wellness Center, window community build. I was gonna say, do you wanna explain that a bit to the public? Laura, you there? Hi Laura. We don't have your sound yet, hold on, might be you, might be us. It's not just us that had trouble zooming. It's not just us that's...
Yeah, we got, we got, we got.
Do you wanna try again?
Can you hear me?
Oh, excellent.
There you go.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Laura, I am the director at Listening Wellness Center, and I actually found out about this program. I grew up in Vermont and one of the town garages in my hometown in Vermont was, the people were sharing how amazing it was and that their town garage now was warm where they, where they work and everything, and I was like, "What is this?" And so I did a little research and it's an organization, a nonprofit out of Maine called Window Dressers, and they've been in Maine for 10 years now, moved into New Hampshire and Vermont, and there are no builds in Massachusetts. So when I reached out to them and said, "I'm really interested in learning more about this," they said, "Well, there are no builds in Massachusetts." And I said, "Okay," so I did a little more research and I found out exactly what the program offers and what an amazing program it can benefit for our community. And so I called the lady back and I said, "So what if we decided that we would wanna be, we would wanna spearhead this for our community, what would we do?" And she said, "That would be amazing, you'd be the first, you know, the first in Massachusetts." So basically what it is, it's like a community barn raising for everyone to be able to have access to these window inserts, and I think when I first came to Massachusetts, that some of the town buildings built these wind certs, if I remember correctly, maybe the library, I'm not sure if the town hall or not, but they're, they're basically a, this is a mini version, but it's a window frame, a pine window frame wrapped in plastic on both sides and then with this foam around the out, and they fit right into your window, they're custom measured to everyone's windows, so that they protect any wind from getting in. And so we're looking to be the kind of liaison between Window Dressers and getting it into our community and having people have access to it. And what it involves is a one-week period of time where they get all the equipment and the supplies here, and then anyone who purchases windows actually contributes a few hours of their time, so that's where the community piece is, bringing people together. So the only thing that we're kind of getting out of it is building community and helping people get warmer houses. I really feel like our connection to it is part of help and wellness is people need a warm, safe house to live in and financial support, and I really think that at this time, both of those things would help their overall, all of our overall mental health. So that's how it kind of fits into our community at Listening, being the ones spearheading it. So I can show you if you'd like, you know, kind of the diagram of the layout and the reason why I'm looking for something like the town hall to use, it's just because the, for me, that building is, says community, it just feels like, you know, it's bringing everyone together, it's easily accessible, you know, people could get there from, you know, whatever part of Berry, and so that's what I was looking for.
I'd like to ask you a couple more questions though. Tell us a little more about, how does someone sign up to be on the list to get these windows, these, the wind stops? What kind of cost is involved for the people who want them, what kind of expense might be for the town that we might share in that? Just curious to know a little more about how it goes from an idea to being in someone's home.
Yeah, so I didn't wanna go, I didn't wanna jinx myself, if you will, so I didn't wanna form a big committee and get started and then find out that we didn't have a place to do this, so we're, we're like sitting on the fence of being able to announce this. So we form a committee, a local coordinator, some volunteer coordinators, people who wanna, you know, work through the whole year, we're gonna need four to six people to actually go into people's homes and measure. So the first step would be to put it out to like the press, our local newspaper, we put it out on Facebook. I already did set up an email address and a phone number, just so that if people, if someone found out about it, they have a way to reach, you know, to reach us. So it's, it's really word of mouth getting it out to everyone. The inserts are small, medium, and large, they have them priced at $32, $43, and $59. So they, if someone was interested, then they would, they would let us know, and then once our measurers get trained by Window Dressers, then we would start, probably April, May, we would start measuring windows, taking payments, and getting them onto the list. It'll be about 200 windows is what they recommend during the first build. And my goal is, the piece that really pulls at my heartstrings is that low-income families, seniors with restricted incomes, anyone who has a financial restriction can get up to 10 windows for free per year. And Window Dressers lets, lets the local team decide how many they wanna do, and I'd like to do 30% of our windows for our community, so that would be 60, you know, 60 free windows.
We just had the grant application process for improvements we targeted for South Berry. This might marry well with that, where the grant might come in and pay for this, for the, for the homes we choose, so I think it's a great opportunity here to try to tie those two programs together and maybe get some funding.
I couldn't quite, I couldn't quite hear you.
Apologize. We had a grant opportunity currently for, for some homes in town to apply for money to help do necessary repairs, furnaces, roofs, and things they need in their homes, and I'm saying this might marry very well with the grant.
Yeah.
The next round will come out for next year, not, you know, not right now, but I would think we'll do it probably, I would think June or July or something, I'm not sure when it will come around, but we can certainly talk with those folks, and if we could find a way to fund this through a grant as well, that would just make the program more successful and better for those low-income. I think it's a great idea so far.
They really told me, like, I said, because, you know, it's really uncomfortable for you to have that conversation with somebody, and she, and she said to me, she said, "You don't have to, if they, if they say anything about I'm on a fixed dent," because she said, "If, if we know they're on, you know, food stamps or EBT or whatever they're called now, if they get any kind of assistance, they automatically qualify, we don't ask them for any details." So they're really like amazingly supportive, I thought, I mean, I would think that they would wanna, you know, but she said, "Nope, it's kind of the honor system."
Hey, let me answer, just, I have no idea who makes these windows. Is it a group of people who show up at the town hall? Or are they ordered from a company?
Yeah, no, so what happens is, we, we as our local group, we do all the measuring and we put it into their computers, and the guy, the guy's in Maine at their headquarters, he cuts all of the sticks and wraps them, bundles them up, and they get shipped to us, they're tagged, so when the whole truckload arrives of all of these, they're in bundles, so we know that, you know, these are Maureen's bundle, this is Maureen's bundle, this is Laura's bundle, and then the way that, can I share my screen, is that okay?
Yeah. I just have to give you permission, my bad.
Okay, I'll just show you what it looks like, it's like 13 different stations.
You should be all set.
Set up an assembly line and build them.
It's like 13 different stations that are set up, and each station is a, here it is, so each station, like, they walk in at the check-in table and then this is where the tape goes around the window, and then they'll move them over to the first wrapping station, and then they go to the next wrapping station, and then, you know, so that's a, it's kind of like a flow-through, and so each person who's a volunteer, who's somebody who's purchased windows, so I might be there for four hours that day and my job that day was taping the windows, and then the next person plastics them, and then the next person, and so the build is, it's happening all week long, and then at the end of the week, there'll be against the wall, you know, all of your windows, all of my windows, like that sort of thing.
What's, what, how do you have quality control in this?
So the, the organization does the training for us, and I'm actually going up the first weekend in, in April, there's a energy show up in South Portland, Maine, and I'm going up there to actually do a build so I can see it myself and understand, but there's like shift supervisors, and each person, each step is supposed to be self-checked, but then the shift supervisor checks to make sure that the quality is happening all the way through.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have any conflicts with the times they're asking for the building?
Nope, we double-checked her schedule before we filtered the application, so...
Well, this is, you know, the kind of community things we like to see, and nonprofit and communities, this is why I always recommend we, we approve it and do not charge a fee for our building.
I would agree and move approval of the request.
So that's move approval without fee?
Without fee.
And I will second that, so we have a motion to second to approve the request for use of town property and waive the fees for the duration. Any further discussion?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I also noted that, I wondered, you have an energy committee on the website that doesn't appear to be active, so I didn't know if there were any folks in your organization that would wanna be involved in this, you know, right from the get-go, and I could communicate and do that on another time.
Excellent, yeah, and I think we can help out with advertising, get, certainly get in our towns page, and hopefully the local folks that run the Berry pages would pick this up as well, if you have anything to advertise. Yeah, and I just think it's a great project, it's a great idea, and we'll have to definitely see if that grant can tie into this and supply funding as well, because that would certainly, you know, make it that much better and more successful, and I appreciate this.
Yeah, and if it takes, and if it's, I mean, and if it's wildly successful, what they've been doing in their other places is, you know, coming back the next year and doing it, and if you do wanna look on their website and click on the community builds, you'll see they have probably 45 different locations throughout Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont, it's pretty amazing.
I think a lot of towns like this, like Berry, smaller towns could use something like this. We still have a lot of low-income folks and a lot of older homes out here, and I certainly think, you know...
Yeah.
There's a similar prices to putting on like a combination storm window without having to go outside the house and measure and get them on, the interior inserts.
Right, right, and like the building that, the building that Listening is in, I mean, that's our biggest expense, it's, and the wind blows through those windows, so, yeah.
I'm sure. All right, then I will, this...
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Bye.
I'll call for vote, all this favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Carrie, thank you very much.
Okay.
Excellent.
I'll just go off now, Jessica.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, moving on to Lions Club Car Show.
I know that's an annual, very successful event, so I would move approval.
I will second the motion, motion and second to approve the Lions Club Annual Car Show. Any further discussion? I will make some comments first. Is there any more of this application, have they done the rounds with the police and the fire and all that before this, or...
To my knowledge, we've only done the use of town property, I don't know...
He's working on the special events.
Okay.
He's quite familiar with the process.
The process, yeah.
All right, we're just, we're just, I would suggest we probably wanna table it till we have it all together, this is just something I've done in the past. When I started on the board five years ago, every application that came through was incomplete and we're always approving pending, 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 so we sort of discontinued that, so...
What I just don't wanna do is, I don't wanna make it impossible for somebody to actually, this is an annual thing that we've seen numerous times.
Right.
I understand what you're saying and I would withdraw my motion to approve it this time.
Appreciate that.
And...
This is in September, so we have plenty of time.
That we table.
All right.
Until such time as other community, community, shall we say, I guess, police, the fire, and everybody have the opportunity to...
Yeah, just fill the special permit, it's usually pretty...
Go out there, permit.
It's relatively straightforward, but we'll just do that and we'll get back to it soon. I appreciate that's, you know, they're in, well before September, which is great, and we just make sure we get everything done before that, so that will be tabled. Personnel, we have Carol Witt, library director resignation. Doesn't give a reason, does it?
She's taking another position somewhere else.
Yeah.
In actually a different line of library work, so it's, you know...
Right, she's not going to another library, she's working for CW Mark, which is kind of like a company that manages all...
Sharing.
Yeah, library sharing.
Oh, nice.
So she's going to do some cataloging work, which is kind of what she... So she's going to do some cataloging work, which is kind of what she specialized in before she became a librarian.
She will be missed, and we thank her for her work, and we wish her well.
We do.
Um, I met with the trustees and we discussed, you know, going forward with the hiring process and everything. So they wish to post it internally, so that's what we will, um, that's what I will help them work through. And hopefully by the early April, they will have a wage authorization for you guys to approve.
And we have David McNutt. Looks like going from a step one to step two as a full-time officer. Pay change from 2184 to 2498 per hour.
Do we need approval?
Yeah.
Um, move approval?
I second, we have motion second to approve the pay authorization. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor? Aye? Aye?
I would move approval of, um.
No, we're waiting for the vote on the other one.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
It's just, it's just so formal.
I, I know, it happens.
Sorry.
It's, it's all right. We're looking for the next one. We have Dave DeJamps for the Library Trustee Chair.
The Library Trustee Chair, I would move approval of his recommendation to create the position of Acting Library Director. And the person who's been assigned to that position is Joseph Hood. And I would move approval of the wage authorization rate as presented by David DeJamps, Chairman of the Library Trustees.
Okay, and I will second that. A motion to second to approve this authorization. Any further discussion? And to that end, this is a new position they're proposing? He's just going to a new position?
He's just going to.
Okay, just making, just making sure. Because they, they were, people were concerned about their budgeting and lack of hours. I'm worried about them.
Yeah, the, um, the library at the state level, there's a board that oversees all libraries. And they require that somebody is in the library director position to maintain like grant status and funding status. So, um, just for that continuity and for the management of the library.
Okay. Okay, I'll call for vote then, all those in favor? Aye? And we have, please chief job description. I had a one comment under work schedule on the last, last page. It says, but in general, the position requires 40 hours per week. I would just add at least.
Okay.
Well, believe it or not, this goes way back to a paint store I worked at a years ago. They moved up one of the guys they had for years to be a manager of one of the stores. And they expected at least 40 hours a week. He was at 30. He just, he was manager, he assigned the guys, he didn't show up in the store floundering. He wanted to get, you know, they're having trouble. I think he lost his employment there.
I, I would accept your.
Just the technicalities.
Accept your addition to the job description and move approval.
Okay, I would second the motion for approval of that change. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Now we move on to full-time patrol officer, Robert Brooks. Uh, here we go. So this is, oh, going from part-time to full-time?
Correct.
Okay.
I would move approval as presented by the Chief.
I'll second the motion to approve. That's for, um, Robert Brooks, become full-time officer at 2184 an hour. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Uh, we have Jesse Clayman, non-call firefighter EMT. This is, clause one, step one, so this should be a new hire, I believe?
Correct.
Needs a non-call.
And I would typically abstain from these, not because I legally have to, just because it is fire department business. But being we have one selectmen down, I will continue with this.
I would move approval as presented by Fire, by the Fire Chief, uh, Robert Bargowski.
Now, I'll second the motion for approval. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Now, we are down to, Insurance Advisory Committee, Fire Department, Union Appointment. What is that about?
I put this on the agenda just because it's at that time of year where we're going through our insurance, approvals for the next fiscal year. But with the Fire Department having a new union, I talked with Ellen about, you know, adding a union representative to the Insurance Advisory Committee. And I requested the Fire Department, um, union have an appointment for today. But they didn't, um, they did not have an appointment. So I guess we will have to table this till next time.
Very good. And license renewals, we have PNF Services.
Looks like the, um, the information is, is complete.
Yep.
With check and so forth, so I would move approval.
I'll second, we have motion second to approve PNF's motor vehicle license renewal form. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Other business, anything, anyone have any topic for other business tonight?
Other than, you know, I'd just like to thank the DPW for their quick, rapid response to my concern about the broken lantern on the corner of South Street and 122.
Okay.
It's great.
Well, that was taken care, and they came in and explained today, which is good before their meeting. And hopefully that means that, um, the finance can meet and make a recommendation on this as well. Um, we can do that at the same time. When would that be?
So the Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow. But then usually the Select Board and the Finance Committee both meet right before the town meeting.
Right, we can make our recommendation by that point.
A half hour before.
So we'll save it till then.
I would recommend, yeah.
All right. Correspondents, CPC, um, they have outlined their, well, let's do the minutes for us. Sorry about that. I'm jumping.
I would move approval of the February 22nd, 2022, um, meeting minutes as presented.
For the open meetings, then?
Yes.
For us to start with?
Yes.
I will second the motion to approve the, um, open meeting minutes from February 22nd. Any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And then we have.
These are not to be released, correct?
Yep, we now have this, um.
I would move approval of the February 22nd, 2022 Executive Session, uh, meeting minutes as presented, but not for public release to this, at this stage.
Thank you, and I will second the motion. Um, any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And lastly, we have February 28th, uh, open meeting. Yeah, it wasn't too bad, once we got it all turned on.
Yeah. I, I move approval of the minutes of the February 28th meeting, 2022, as presented.
I will second the motion, any further discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Now we'll go to the CPC. CPC has sent us a check for $5,800 in, is that eight or six? Let me read, $605.31. They've totaled up what their sales are for the year and the total amount that has brought on the host agreement to Berry. This year was a total of $23,000 from the CPC, this being the, the final installment of, of that portion of money. So we thank them and, um, accept the check. And that will go into the, uh, to the general fund. And I, I really think we should have a brief discussion on this. The state had said that years ago, when we take money in from these host agreements, that that money has to be used towards issues caused by this. Um, so when working with the Finance Committee and budget, I think it's important that we earmark at least $23,000 and note that it's something like.
Are we?
Like I said, we have a four-wheel-drive ambulance now. You can't get to their place without it. It's a, it's a half a mile, three-quarter mile uphill mud slick road. And sooner or later, we're going to have to get some fire apparatus that has all-wheel-drives to get up there as well. So we have need to spend money. And I just think it's important to make a note, someplace i- i- in the budget we spend it, that that's where this money went. Um, when I talked to Representative Berthew, he says that in the future, the state will go after those funds if we don't use them properly. Because the state will gladly take them and add it to the ones they already take and use as they see fit.
Could I ask that we check, um, with, remember, we should check with, to make sure that this shouldn't be in a revolving account? And that would take, it may, it may not go, it may not be appropriate to.
And if it's in a revolving account, we wouldn't have to spend it down every year, but we can use it towards things.
Towards the things that are related to this.
It's a good idea. If that could be in a revolving account, we should put it there no matter what.
I know that, yeah, there's some limits on that, so you can talk to DOR about that in your spare time.
I will be sure to, Gina and I can have a conversation with them about that, so.
Yes, always fun, isn't it? Select Board Reports, um, I have nothing this evening, Dr. Marshall?
I have nothing, other than the sewer stuff that I was very interested in, so I'm thankful.
Todd Administrator Report?
Um, thank you. So in the, you know, past couple of weeks, been pretty busy with this upcoming town meeting, getting, um, we had a little bit of an issue with the location at the high school. So luckily, um, the way that the town clerk had the, the meeting posted, she had it posted at the high school and auditorium ended up not being, I mean, not the auditorium, the cafeteria ended up not being the location, um.
Wrestling season, I'm sure.
Now there's a concert in the auditorium. And so the way that people enter the auditorium is through the cafeteria. So we just had to adjust that.
Into the gymnasium, I assume?
Into the Panther Gymnasium.
Okay.
Which, which I live at the high school side. Um, and so we, we had to make a little bit of a last-minute adjustment late last week. Um, other than that, I've been having a lot of conversations around, surrounding ARPA, use of ARPA funds. The Fire Chief, um, he's really intent on, on investing in a, a fire truck and ambulance just because, um, of the build times right now for an ambulance and a fire truck. It's about two years out. Um, so even though we wouldn't be spending any money right now, you know, even just getting to the point where he has permission to place an order, because every community in America is basically placing orders for that kind of apparatus.
The ARPA funds have created great demand for fire trucks. Because a lot of towns have taken that opportunity to, to purchase with it.
Yeah, so.
So the backlog's even worse than it used to be.
Right, and, and just on top of like the backlog was already bad before ARPA, uh, ARPA came along. Um, so he and I have been working on some different funding proposals, um, because those are the two biggest, um, you know, other than like the upcoming fire station, those are some of the two biggest purchases that we're looking at making, um, that the community needs to invest in. Um, so what he's going to present to the Finance Committee tomorrow, his capital requests, um, and.
The only concern that I have is that I would hate to see the entire ARPA funding, you know, amount that we have dedicated to s- one single department.
Right.
Not that it isn't important, I don't.
I don't think that's what she's saying the intent is. I think.
Yeah, no, I think so part.
Yes, because of ARPA's made the backlog while he wants, he's, he's not saying to use the ARPA funds.
Oh, is he talking for the ARPA funds, am I wrong?
He, I mean, partially, I think.
I'm sure he'd like some of it, but it's not.
Part of our conversation, because you can, you can lease to purchase these, these apparatus. So part of our conversation, one, and I have a meeting with the, um, a kickoff meeting with our, the people who are going to manage our, our ARPA funds for us on Wednesday. So I'm going to talk to them a little bit about this. Um, so one of the concerns is that, what, you know, what the government giveth, the government can take its away. Um, so I, I want to get their feel on like how we can best.
Fund it.
Yeah, best use the funds in a way that like, you know, in the event that the, the federal government decides that they need ARPA funds back, um, that we aren't, you know, missing out on.
Like, I don't think that will happen. They, they've got too much invested in this whole deal. I mean, I think the towns, the towns already have their hands on it.
Right.
And many of them have spent considerable amounts already.
Right, so I think, so part of our, our plan is to do a lease purchase and do part of the lease out of ARPA. And then the remainder of the lease, which wouldn't impact the town's budget until like FY '26 and later. Um, and then that would, that would split up the payments probably the best to give a balance between not using up, drying up all the ARPA funds, but also not putting the burden completely on the taxpayers right now. And in the time leading up to like FY '26, we can invest in that capital improvement stabilization fund. So, you know, we have, we're, we're starting to save up now for when those payments can hit in the later years. So that's just some of our, um, initial conversations.
The conversation, I think, has to be much more broader-based. And because other departments, I'm sure, have, you know, significant needs as well. And so I just want to make sure that everybody gets a chance at a bite of the apple, or at least that we could consider.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that it should happen, but, um, it makes, um, a lot of sense to really think about what's happening in DPW, they're, they're all, they have expensive stuff.
Right.
What's happening as far as our buildings and what, you know, whether we have to do some HVAC modifications in some of our buildings.
Like this one?
Yeah, well.
Maybe the police department first.
You know, I, I mean, some of this is just even beyond what ARPA could help us support. But I mean, there are some things we could do.
But yeah, I definitely think that.
I just want us to have a, a, a plan that the public can understand. And it just doesn't look like, you know, oh, we're just doing all fire stuff. Or, oh, we're just doing all ambulance stuff. Or, you know, I'd like everybody to have some opportunity to, um, get some benefit from the ARPA funds. You know, without making it so everybody gets so little, it doesn't mean anything. So it's, it's, we have to balance.
Yeah, I think that, that's really the, the approach that I've been trying to take it as, is saying like, um, you know, not relying on ARPA for 100%. So even with the broadband build-out, we have that $100,000 from town meeting from two years ago that we've invested in conjunction with some ARPA funds. And moving forward, that's kind of the approach that I'd like to take is saying, you know, we're not going to put 100% of the burden on our free cash or the taxpayers.
Right, but let the taxpayers have, have some skin in the game and not just like for free things from.
Instead of, yeah.
I think, you know, the, um, we're going to have to deal with spectrum, whether we like it or not, I guess, as far as what's going to happen with the people who do not have access to broadband. I think we, we've, we should use some ARPA money definitely to get that stuff done.
Did we ever get a clarification as to them and why the price jumped so drastically from the, what they told us the meeting before? That the whole expense is only the $180,000? And we pay some share of that to jumping to, what was it, 700 or 500?
Oh, no, it wasn't that much.
It was a triple, it was almost 500, it was 476,000, I think. But it was, it was a massive jump from where it was.
Well, I think we just need to get.
After they did the whole walkout.
We need to get the best information we can on what it would cost us to do the broadband outreach to the rest of the community. Um, because we spent already 100-plus doing Supreme Hill.
But I still want an explanation from the company as to why they changed the price drastically.
I agree, but I just.
Right after they heard we got ARPA funds and if need be, then we could also.
I don't remember them having, um, as number, as low as you, you remember.
No, I thought it was 122 and you'd said it was like 186. And I went back and reviewed the minutes and it was the higher number you'd said. But it was still under 200,000 to do the whole walkout and build.
And that, to me, is, you know, we could have done that, yeah.
But then they more than doubled that. I thought, I thought they almost tripled it, was the number we get back. And I wanted to know why.
I believe there's going to be federal broadband money. At least that's what they're telling the, you know.
Right, but if, if they're increasing their number three times just because it's federal money they're going to take from it, as opposed to this is the actual fair market value of what we're doing, you know, I have, I have a problem with that, and so would the government.
Well, I don't know if that's what their, their thoughts were.
I don't know either, that's why I want to find out.
I agree, but that's part of, I think, part of our ARPA money.
Yes, we have to address, we have to address internet with part of this, with part of the funds.
Painful, but we do have to.
Absolutely, I agree. Okay, go ahead, Jessica, we've, we dragged that one out for you.
Um, I think for, for right now, we've just been very, very busy with all of the finance and.
How is the, um, you know, the new financial system? How is the, um, you know, the new financial system, I mean, I know that we're getting set up for that, because we're gonna do the trade, trade over in July 1, so.
Right.
Yeah, as far as I know, that they're still plugging along.
And we're getting, reconciliations are getting closer?
Yes, yes, much closer.
We were two one, two months last.
Two months late.
Last week, so maybe you're.
By next week, when we have our next update, we should be 100%, we will be 100%.
I like that, we will be.
There we go.
Um, so that's, that's what I have for you right now.
Um, as far as, um, our certification of free cash, which is in the negative, but we know why, and that's
Yep.
something we can remediate. What are the, where do we, or how do we figure out how quickly we generally get those reimbursements back after the Department of Transportation looks at it? Does, does that money come to us at that point, or does it go to the Department of Revenue first? Is it like, okay, Department of Transportation, back to the town, and then there's paperwork that goes to the Department of Revenue from us that allows them to fix our free cash issue?
Uh, my understanding is that DOT communicates with DOR, and then, um, DOR, then we get that free cash, uh, the money back.
Because, I mean, if we could get that.
It should happen quickly.
Well, I live and hope, but we, if we can get that before, you know, until, in late April, it'll help us with town meeting discussions.
Oh, I would be shocked if it didn't come back before.
Oh, I wouldn't.
Oh, I would.
Everybody is.
That's, that's been pretty good, but getting that when things are done, that's been reasonable. Well, the holdup is, the holdup isn't so much free cash itself as it is the Chapter 90 funds.
Yes, exactly.
And those should, those should be cleared.
But then the department, you know, the loggerhead often can be, just, it gets to the Department of Revenue, and it just doesn't get certified. Because the, the town accountant and the treasurer have to do some paperwork before that can happen. So I just wanna make sure that we know what the plan is, and if we have to talk with Senator Goldie or Representative Bertheum to say, help us.
Yeah.
Because, um, we really need to get that straightened out sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. Yeah, there was, there were a couple of things I, I wanna follow up with Jean on, um, in regards to our free cash number, because they were just, it was, uh, the Chapter 90 funds weren't the o- only thing that hit our free cash, so there were a couple of other grants that I wasn't sure about, and one of them that I will be reaching out to the senator or representative about, just because I've reached out to the state several times for their assistance on it, and they have not gotten back to me, so.
Okay.
But minor numbers compared to the Chapter 90.
Okay.
Substantial. Public comment, you here for public comment or anything? Well, now's your time. Come on up, introduce yourself.
Yep, I need all the way up, or?
Sure, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Uh, my name's Mark O'Connor, I'm the owner of the Jenkins for Cans block, uh, and, uh, Red Tomato was a tenant of mine.
Okay.
And I must have messed up, because I think Kyle Lindley was supposed to speak, but it may have been last week.
Carl Lindley?
He's the attorney for Red Tomato.
We have not heard.
We haven't heard anything.
Okay, well, evidently gave me some.
Bad information?
Yeah, bad information.
Miscommunication's always our big problem.
Yeah, uh, but anyway, I thought I was gonna meet with him up here, and he asked for, you know, a minute to, to speak, you know, because there has been problems down the, uh,
Yeah.
the Red Tomato, and I was coming up, because I did watch the February 22nd meeting on TV, and there was some information on there that I just find, it wasn't accurate. Uh, it kept getting referred to as a fire escape in the back that has to be rebuilt. And, you know, you had referred to this umbrella company somewhere where people died and all of that.
Could've, no, no one did.
Okay, evidently it shut down before they did, or.
Well, it was an example for.
It was a, more of a fictitious example for why, why, I'll hold you for one second, we'll let you get back. I originally wanted to have a discussion on the board with you and with Red Tomato to talk about the whole situation, and find out more about the concerns that I'd heard, which was something about, whatever, the fire escape deck, I don't, I don't know, that's my problem. I'm not able to have that discussion because we didn't give notice and invite everybody in to do so. And I was frustrated the town council didn't want it because they worried, I just wanted to do sanctions. And I said, well, no, I wanna know what our options are, whether they be sanctions or not, or what's available for anyone in town to, because now that it's come to our attention, I wanna look at it and figure it out and understand it. But given that didn't happen, we can't have that discussion. Can't bring you in, can't ask you about it, can't ask them about it. It would've been nice to have the discussion and bring in the building inspector, the fire inspector, yourself and the Red Tomato owners, and sit down and figure out what the heck is, what anyone's issue is with anyone, and make, find a way to, to get through it and get it all done.
Well, so, so, a lot of the combination, uh, conversation had to do with fire escape, and it's not a fire.
Second egress, I thought it was, not.
It's the third egress, but in fact, it could be the fourth egress, and it's only for the kitchen help. Uh, there's rear stairs of what he uses to take the garbage down to the dumpster down in Cat Alley, and take his grease from his fryolators down. He is the only one that uses this, and listening to the commentary of a couple of meetings ago, it made it sound like the fourth floor was in a case of a fire, you know, all these people were gonna be rushing out onto this fire escape, which in fact, it isn't a fire escape. You know, it does, you know, we built it, you know, 30 years ago, out of pressure-treated, I checked it, the joist hangers are all good, it's all pressure-treated lumber, it's aged, like anything would be, outside for 30-plus years. And so I just wanted to clarify that, because I think that was a lot of the discussion, and, you know, it, it upset me a little bit about, you know, wanting to take away his, uh, liquor license, that was mentioned a few times.
Right.
As a starter, you know?
I'm asking if there's things we can do when, when companies do things that, and what to get, I, I can't discuss what is and isn't done there, and what can and can't do, because we didn't have them in for a meeting, so.
Jump through hoops just to get his license back. He got shut down for a week, that means all the food that he had, unfrozen, had to be thrown away. A week later, he had to restock everything, made him do another whole ANSEL inspection, which was just done in September. Uh, the fire alarm system and everything was done in September. You know, everything that was written on the list to redo had already been done, uh, five months previous.
Right, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there, though, before we go too far into this discussion, because no one else is here for the other side of this. Um, there was a fire call there, there were fire reports generated from it, and building inspector reports, and there was reason for those rein inspections, because of what they found when they got there. That's all I can say about it, I can't get into more detail about it, and we can't go into it much further of a discussion without having this on the agenda to give anybody else. You know, that, it's, I, I'm giving you the time I am, because, yeah, I had comments, and I don't want people to mistake, when I said, and I was very clear. They were given things to do, they've complied, they're open, they've done what they've been asked to do, I was very clear in the end about that. Frustrated that we didn't get to have the discussion, everyone didn't get to come in, and I feel very comfortable giving you a few minutes to make sure you get to voice your opinion on it. But we can't have a lot of back and forth about this, because it has not been advertised. Um, and certainly because we haven't given notice to ask Red Tomato in, and have the fire inspector in, have the building inspector in, and have a really, you know, I, I hate getting bits and pieces everywhere, that's why I wanted to have everyone here.
Yeah.
And do it.
Like I say.
Because then it could be hashed out, and everyone knows, no one, no one misinterprets, mishears, misunderstands, miscommunicates. It's all done at once, and it, and it's settled, but we didn't get to do that.
Yeah, well, I know Dr. Marshall had a lot of questions on it, and, you know, uh, I'm not just trying to, you know, educate you now, unless you'd stop back there to look at it. I don't know, but, uh, anyway, just a big misinterpretation, it's, it's a fire escape, and it isn't a fire.
I appreciate you coming in.
The thing that I was cautious of the whole time is that the board should not cast aspersions on any business or any landlord or any other citizen without having all of the information. And I thought at times the board sort of got there, where maybe there were things said that maybe cast aspersions on a business or yourself or other people, and so I certainly hope that, uh, that wasn't the case, but I get nervous when that seems to happen. And Greg is totally right, that, you know, we would need to have your attorney and everybody else, you know, sit around and have a conversation if we're gonna have the conversation.
Which was my, which, which is my goal, and that was my frustration, that it didn't get to occur.
Most of the things have been answered and everything like that, but like I say, I thought the Red Tomato attorney was gonna be there to clarify some of that.
He's certainly welcome.
Clearly, and I will say once again, they have met everything that's been asked of them. They are, have all their approvals for the certifications, for the ANSEL, for their HUD, for their fire detecting and fire reporting systems. They've been inspected by the town, the fire inspector, and the building inspector, and they are 100% up to, up to standard, re-approved and open properly. I said that at last time, and I'll say that again, there's everything, there's nothing else, uh, to go into, and, and, you know, if there's an issue that the building inspector does have with any stairs or decks, he can deal with the issue, it's, it doesn't need to be here. I was just hoping to bring the whole thing here, didn't work out that way, didn't want miscommunication. Um, but I was voicing my frustration with us not being able to have that occur when it's something we asked for, to have the notification done. Um, that's more of an internal matter here at, at that point, for why, how things get and don't get scheduled.
It means that's him and me not agreeing.
No, no, I mean, it means when the chairman of the board says something's on the agenda, it's on the agenda, it's his agenda to make. Um, and it's his agenda to remove things from, and when things are supposed to be on there, they should be on there. That was my, my frustration. If there's a concern that the attorneys or somebody says we shouldn't have it on the agenda, there needs to be a discussion, at least between the administrator myself and the attorney myself, to decide whether or not I wanna pull it from the agenda, or whether we have that discussion as to whether or not we should continue at the meeting, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't disappear from the agenda.
I, I believe that there, there was a, a communication from our attorney who said not to put it on the agenda.
It's not his decision what goes on the agenda.
Well.
That, that's something that needs to come to, to the chairman to say, phew, we really advise you don't put this on the agenda. That's, that was my point of that.
Well, that's what we advised.
The, the process needs to go that way, we need to keep people informed of, for, but once again, this is internal, as I said. We, we, as, we, we can't have the discussion unless we have it here on camera anyway, so we're gonna have, we've gotta have those discussions publicly.
That, uh, that was one, and the other thing had to do with the first, uh, thing on your list here with the water rates and everything.
Yes.
Uh, you know, and I just found it kinda funny that everything referred to was residential, and how much it was going on. You know, commercial gets involved in that also.
Right.
And commercial is already a higher rate than the residential.
Yes.
And, you know, the, the 1,000 cubic foot was band around, I've got some that do 3,000 feet, so instead of $50, you know, it's $150 a quart. So you don't look at, you know.
The commercial, the commercial rate is a penny higher, so per cubic.
Well, it's, I think it's 64 residential, 74 commercial.
I'm looking at the rates, per cubic foot.
Yeah, minimum charge.
Right, well, then, per cubic foot, it has been 10 cents for residential and 11 for commercial.
Yeah.
This year, it's up to 11 residential and 12 commercial, and, and next year, it'll be 12 and 13. So commercial's staying one penny per cubic foot, or one dollar per 100 cubic foot, which is a bill amount. So it stays at a dollar above, so if, if the residents are paying 12, commercial's paying 13.
Yeah.
So it's not a huge jump.
Well, you know, you're gonna pay in the water bill for a restaurant, or, uh, well, we have the dog washed downstairs, she goes through a lot of water, and it's, you know, it's.
And those are, and those are things for landlords, considering the rents when the rates rise, that the rents for people who use that amount of water can certainly go up.
You know, all the bills come to me as the property owner, but I have to turn the bills over to the, the tenant, who, you know,
Right.
complains and everything else, so, you know, I tell them, well, conserve as much as you can, and, and they try to. I also have to wash the glasses and the dishes and everything, you know, want somebody just throwing a fork underneath the spigot for a second, you know, it's gotta be done right. So I'm just saying, the commercial rates are a lot more than that.
They're just one penny more, they are, you know, what's that, 9% more than the residential rates roughly? Is that right?
Yep.
About nine, eight, something like that, so. They're a little higher, but it's.
A hundred dollars a quarter, so.
It's certainly, mine is, I have.
Well, there's no, there's no question that I've had, I'm concerned about those rates, whether they be for an individual homeowner or for a business or certain. Um, I, we know that there are 30-year-plus stuff that needs to get fixed.
Oh, yeah, I, like I said, when I started off, that I'm not against, you know, the project, because you, you can only put Band-Aid on it so many times.
Right.
And 30 years has outlived its life, you know, and what, you know, Jason had talked about.
Right.
So, you know, I don't have a problem with it, and I just wanted to clarify that, you know, that's not all the rates that are, not everybody's residential in this town.
No, there's also more rates than that, there's an industrial rate and. There is a, unmeasured rate, well, industrial is 15 cents, was, 17, now it'll be 19, so that's substantially higher. And then there's unmeasured rates in septic in town, septic out of town, I imagine for people.
With the trailers.
Dumping trailers, campers, or whatever. Um, and unmeasured water, I don't know how they're getting that, if that's, I, I don't know what that use would be.
I don't know who, who that would be, even.
Um, possibly filling swimming pools, things like that, or, I'm guessing, I don't know, but the, yeah, the industrial rate's substantially higher than the commercial rate, and the commercial is slightly more than residential. Um, this should be part of the package attached to the town site, so it's, it's researchable by anybody what those rates are in there, and ready for anybody to, uh, to look at. Anything else, but, okay.
Those comments that clarify some things about the building.
I, I gave you a minute on the stair comment, because we were talking about it, and I wanna make sure you had a chance to speak on it. I can certainly let you talk about the current issues that are on our agenda, like the septic, all you want, because that's, that's an agenda item. And I have no problem circling back to that for, for as long as you'd like. Typically, we don't go that deep in any comments here, but, um, you know, we're out talking old business here in both cases, and certainly having, um, you know, reason to be here, from, from my comments before about what's going on up there, and my, my frustrations with
Yeah, you know, I have.
our workings, but.
You know, that's the main thing.
Abs- absolutely, and, um, you know, hope all's well down there, and I hope they don't have more smoke alarms, and they, they keep it going nice, and.
Yeah, to, to get everything fixed out, well, not fixed, to get things redone and rechecked, it, uh, you know, very expensive, but anyway, that was my problem.
Well, that's, that's a concern, once they have that, you know, once they show up and find what they find, is, they gotta do what they've gotta.
Sprinklehead that's discolored, and they decide they've gotta change it in order to sign the, you know, the fire permit, and, you know, so we changed 30 of the things in the building, because it was discolored. You know, this is thick cast iron steel, just because there's a discoloration on it doesn't mean it's junk, you know, if it was rusted or something like that, I could've seen it, but it isn't. You know, but in order to get them to sign off on everything, that's what we had to do. Like I say, it cost a pretty penny to do things that I feel were totally unnecessary, but to stay in compliance, I did it, so.
Well.
Anyway, okay, that's all I had to say.
Thanks for coming in, have a good evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have, um, executive session.
I move we, um, adjourn to executive session, only for the purposes of, for about 20 minutes, and for the purposes of, uh, coming out to only adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion, I will second that, to move to executive session, coming out only to adjourn. Um, any further discussion before we do so? Here now I'll call for roll call vote.
Aye, Marshall?
Anne O'Sullivan is yes.